Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our annual reception to honor our board-certified employees. Mr. Jabbia will be coming to the podium later in the program to recognize these employees. Before we begin tonight's entertainment, I would like to point out the artwork displayed on the walls this month. These pieces were created by talented arts students from Little Oak Middle and Bonne Ecole Elementary School. Their teacher is Ms. Darlene Powell. Please take a look at these beautiful pieces later on at the reception. This is February, and we'd like to begin the program with a short video produced by Channel 13 where we are celebrating Black History Month, so please enjoy.
I am happy to join with you today in what will go down in history as the greatest demonstration for freedom in the history of our nation.
I, Barack Hussein Obama, who solemnly swear-
That I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute-
The office of President of the United States-
The office of President of the United States.
We must make the pledge that we shall always march ahead. We cannot turn back.
Let us answer the call of history and carry into an uncertain future that precious light of freedom. Thank you, God bless you, and may he forever bless these United States of America.
You may also notice the dress and book displayed to my right. The dress was donated by Ms. Dorothy Hannah. It belonged to her grandmother, Mrs. Charlotte Lovering, who was one of the first school teachers in St. Tammany Parish. We thought this would be an appropriate night to display this dress. It's a schoolteacher's dress. It reminds us of those who helped forge this great school system which we now have. Thinking about the early years of our school system, we know that the first recorded superintendent of schools was Mr. Joseph B. Lancaster. His grandson, Mr. Christian Garcia, has written a charming book about his grandfather's life in Covington in the early 1900s as a judge, as a superintendent of schools, and as a state legislator. Joseph Lancaster wrote many letters to his young bride Amanda Dorr Lancaster during his years of traveling back and forth to Baton Rouge and around the state. One of our talented theater teachers, Ms. Kristen Elliott, read the book entitled "Now and Always: A Louisiana Love Story." Ms. Elliott is with us tonight, of course. She was so impressed with the book that she wrote a play based on these letters. And who better to perform this play but her students, who just happened to attend Lancaster Elementary School, which, by the way, is named after Superintendent Joseph B. Lancaster? I'd like to thank Ms. Susanna Welch and Ms. Andrea Heemel, principal and assistant principal from Lancaster, the parents who are here tonight to support their young actors and actresses. I'd also like to welcome some of the descendants of Superintendent Lancaster who are with us tonight, and I'd like them to please stand. Judge Peter Garcia, May Lee Ferrerett, Liz Smith, and Edie Easton. We're very glad to have you here tonight. And now, please help me welcome the students of Lancaster Elementary School as they perform "Now and Always."
In late 1901, Joseph Bradford Lancaster met Amanda Amelie Dorr either through his position as superintendent of St. Tammany Parish Schools and her as a substitute teacher or through mutual friends. They began writing letters to each other nearly from the day they met and wrote almost daily until their marriage in 1902. After that, they wrote whenever they were away from each other. Through their letters, we get a personal look at how much they loved each other and what life was like in St. Tammany Parish over 100 years ago.
In 1901, the technology that we take for granted in our everyday lives did not exist. No computers, Internet, smartphones, television, crossword puzzles, iced tea are the last five states of the United States.
Transportation is almost completely on the ground or water, and only had airplanes could lift man into the skies.
The world map is very different, and many countries in our news today did not exist in 1901, went by different names, or have come and gone in the past 111 years.
Joe and Amanda could not dream of the wars, economic challenges, disasters, or acts of terrorism that the citizens of the United States would face in the century to come.
In 1901, automobiles are just beginning to compete with horses, wagons, and carriages for space on the streets.
Doctors McHouse calls, and only 10% of them have college degrees. Less than 5% of Americans are born in hospitals. Only 6% of Americans have graduated high school, and only 8% of the people have a telephone.
Teddy Roosevelt has become president after President McKinley was assassinated.
Adults in their 40s and older remember the upheaval of the war between the states. Most veterans of that war are in their late 50s and 60s.
The United States is mostly rural, and there are more people living in Alabama than there are in California. New Orleans is the 12th most populous city in the country.
St. Tammany Parish has a total population of 13,335, and its four biggest towns are Madisonville, 779 people, Mandeville, 1,029 people, Slidell, 1,129 people, and Covington, 1,205 people.
But progress is on the move, and things are modernizing very quickly.
In the early 1900s, electricity, telephones, and waterworks come to towns in St. Tammany Parish. It is linked to New Orleans with a railroad line, three sailing ships, and one steamer.
Boats crisscross the lake carrying many different products from St. Tammany to New Orleans and back.
In the summer of 1901, a new schooner is christened in Madisonville by Mrs. Amanda Dorr before it is sailed across the lake to New Orleans.
Mr. Joseph B. Lancaster presents the owners with a searchlight for the boat.
And so-
In that year begins a love story to "Now and Always."
On December 8, 1901, Joe wrote his first letter to Amanda and replied to one from her earlier.
My dear Miss Amanda, it is now just the eve of midnight, and nothing could be more pleasant event to close a day than thinking of writing you. It is very pleasant to me to know that you are most sincerely my friend, and I highly appreciate your friendship. With my heart's best wishes that your life may replete with happiness and success, I am, now and always, most sincerely yours, Joseph B. Lancaster.
December 1901, the Honorable Joseph B. Lancaster, Superintendent of Public Schools, recently presented the public school baseball team with a handsome flag, on which occasion he delivered with an eloquent address. The flag was made and donated by Miss Amanda Dorr.
January 10, 1902. My dear Miss Amanda, if convenient, we'd like to leave Covington as shortly after 1:00 is possible. The sooner we leave, the more time I'll have to show you the country. Thought on our way to Madisonville, we could drive down to the old home of Marisa.
January 10. My dear Mr. Lancaster, I shall be most pleased to be ready for our drive as soon after 1:00 as you care to come. I should be delighted, of course, for you to show me the old house and the surrounding
By January 21, the relationship was progressing nicely, and letters from Joe were being addressed to my sweetheart and my well-beloved. After a spring spent almost completely in each other's company and becoming engaged, Joe had to go to Baton Rouge as a member of the Louisiana Legislature. While there, he had to study to become a lawyer, so trips home to Covington were few and far between.
May 3, 1902. My darling sweetheart, your sweet and gracious letters was much welcome. I too feel blue away from my sweetheart, and I'm always longing for the time when I could go to you. I thought that love and I would always be strangers, but here I am, a captive in its enhancing charm. With the best and truest love, I am, now and always, sincerely and lovingly yours, Joseph B. Lancaster.
He couldn't stand to stay away long and came home the first weekend he could, but that meant he had to leave again.
May 11. We have just finished supper, and how I missed you sitting by me. It does not seem like Sunday at all. Sweetheart, I could not defer until tomorrow telling you how much I missed you and how much my heart ached when the train slowly pulled out this afternoon.
May 12.
May 12. Here I am in Baton Rouge, the great capital of the great state of Louisiana. Many miles distance from her, I love best on earth.
About this time yesterday, you were spinning away from me.
Somehow, my heart is not in my work as yet. Called on the governor this morning with Mr. Salomon of Slidell.
You seem to have been away from me so long.
Well, tomorrow the work will commence in earnest. From now on, I expect to be somewhat a busy man. You must write me often and tell me how much you love me.
Write to me, dear, just as often as you can. I am, now and always, your Amanda.
Three days later, Amanda had to act as a substitute teacher for her sister Bertha. She wrote to Joe about the experience.
May 15. Dearest, I know my teaching would have met with your approval. The children have examinations in geography. One of their questions was, "What is the capital of Louisiana?" Then I heard a small voice in the background say, "Oh, I know! That's where Mr. Joe is."
May 20. I count each hour with impatience. I keep it from you. My only hope is work. The convention of parish superintendents will meet tomorrow to discuss grave questions of education, a question which will call for all activity.
Finally, a break in work and studies allowed Joe to come home for the weekend again to visit his beloved, but it was too short a time.
May 26. I've arrived safely but completely worn out. I believe my trip did me more harm than good, as I feel now more lonesome than ever.
I attended the wedding of Ms. Johnson this morning. Doctor and Mrs. Tolson set back of me. The doctor was hardly seated when he leaned over to me and said quite loudly, "Mrs. Dond- dare, how soon will we all be here to see you come down the aisle to be married? There is something very solemn to me in a church wedding. I expect the parish of St. Tammany will turn out to see Mrs. Joe married."
June 4. Sweetheart, it will be impossible for me to come home this week. I need all the time I can get to put in all my studies, as I cannot put off my examination much longer. My success in this means everything to the both of us. Should I not come soon to see you? You must bear patiently for a little while, then I will be with you always.
On Saturday, June 21, 1902, as reporter in the St. Tammany Farmer, Joseph B. Lancaster appeared before the Supreme Court in New Orleans as an applicant for admission to the bar. He passed with high honors and was complimented for the splendid manner in which he went through the ordeal of examination, and he is now a full-fledged lawyer. We extend congratulations and wish him much success in his full chosen profession.
With the passing of the bar and the conclusion of the legislative session, Joe and Amanda can now be together. The couple began playing the wedding which took place on October 29, 1902, 110 years
Letters and notes flew back and forth with plans who would be in the wedding party, shopping trips, changes they would like in the rental house owned by Mr. Frank Marsland, and how busy Joe was with his new law practice.
October 28. I've simply been rushed to death. I didn't have time to attend the purchasing of articles named in your list, but will do so today. I am busy as two bees.
Telegrams, letters, and gifts flowed in, and the write-up in the paper declared, "The bride never appeared better advantage, being beautifully gowned in white organdy with point lace. She carried a shower bouquet of bride roses."
Joe traveled less in 1903, but did go to Baton Rouge for extra legislative sessions and to Abita Springs to help them become incorporated.
He also traveled to New Orleans by train a great deal and continued to work as superintendent of schools.
The family began to grow, first with the birth of a son named for his father, known as Bradford, and a daughter named for her mother. Then came along Charlie, Catherine, and Edith.
In addition to serving in the Louisiana Legislature and as superintendent of St. Tammany Schools, Joe had a successful law practice and served as judge and district attorney. But life was not kind. Amanda had a paralyzing stroke in the spring of 1916. Her youngest child was just over a year old.
Joe died unexpectedly six weeks later on May 30, 1916, in Franklinton at the age of 51. All of St. Tammany and Washington Parishes mourned him, and the paper records his funeral at St. Peters to be the largest ever taking place in St. Tammany. All places of business were to be closed as his funeral procession passed. He was laid to rest at St. Joseph Abbey in Covington.
Amanda survived him 14 years. Even though their lives together were far too short, their love story has never ended. It continues on in the lives of their five children and in the new millennium. As of late 2011, they had more than 120 direct descendants. If Joe and Amanda could talk today, perhaps their conversation would go something like
My dear Amanda, I hope that I have lived up to your hopes and dreams. I never aspired to be a rich man and worked hard to make sure that you and the children would lead at least a comfortable life. You and they are at the center of my life, and we will leave history to record whether my other efforts have been worth it.
My dearest Joe, no husband or father could have been better. Never doubt that now and always you are the love of my life. As to your success, no man could be as respected or valued in his community. Who knows? Maybe someday they'll name a school for you.
Outstanding, successful, excellent, proud, happy, brilliant, reliable, alive in our hearts, dependable, first, top-down, clear, loving, attractive, noble, courageous, amazing, superintendent, terrific, elegant, relevant, now and always.
I want to say something to Esther Luke. She is a sister to one of our third graders, Stuart Luke. She's also in her third grade. And when one of our students didn't show up, I grabbed her, thrust a letter in her hand and said, "Can you do this?" Wasn't that delightful? Very exciting. We thank Ms. Elliott for her hard work in putting that together. We thank the family, the descendants of Joseph B. Lancaster. And also, I introduce you to the grandchildren. Well, we have a great-grandchild who also happens to be a teacher in our school system, Ms. Megan Garcia. Would you please stand? Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to turn the rest of the reception over to Mr. Jabbia, the lovely Mr. Jabbia.
Yes. Thanks a lot, Ms. Sharp. Put me to come behind this. It's a hard act to follow. That was really great. My name is Pete Jabbia. I'm Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. We welcome you to our program tonight. We're here to honor our newest group of National Board-Certified Teachers and Guidance Counselors. I want to thank Mr. Foles and his leadership team for making this event possible tonight. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Foles, our superintendent; Ms. Arabi, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction; Mr. Brady, Assistant Superintendent of Administration. I'd like to thank our board members for attending our reception tonight. If you would please stand up, I would also like to recognize you here. So, board members at this time, if you would stand. That's Mr. Luke, Mr. Panks, Mr. Bettencourt, Mr. Lamarck. This side, Ms. Heinz, our president. Anybody else that I missed? Raise your hand, I'm sorry. Ms. Tipton, Ms. Mullet, I'm sorry, didn't see you. And Ms. Bellisario. Thank y'all for coming tonight. Achieving National Board Certification is no easy task. National certification is a testament to personal and professional dedication, intense self-reflection, and the drive for self-improvement. It also shows the level of love and concern these individuals have for the students that they serve in our school system. I will introduce each of them individually during the board meeting a little bit later tonight, but I would like to ask our National Board Teachers to please stand at this time. I'll start from this side, Mr. Vance Lynch, Ms. Brittany Byers, Ms. Heather Revere, and Tiffany Hewson. Thank y'all for coming tonight. And I'm not sure if we do have one National Board Certified Counselor, Ms. Melinda Hobgood. Did Ms. Hobgood make it? The weather's terrible. She's coming in. Come on, we want to introduce you. Melinda Hobgood, National Board Certified Counselor. We will learn more about each of them during the board meeting later tonight. When we conclude our reception in just a few minutes, I'm going to ask all of our National Board Certified Employees to please meet over here with Mr. Ron Barthay and our Superintendent, Mr. Foles, for a picture. Actually, now, this concludes our program. So you can tell I didn't write this. We have punch and cookies on both ends of the back of the reception. We'd like for you to enjoy that, and if you'd like to stay for our meeting, it will begin at 7:00. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Weathers, will you please call the roll? Mrs. Heinz. Here. Mr. Hennigan.
Here.
Mr. Darman.
Here.
Mr. Luke.
Here.
Mr. Harold.
Here.
Mrs. Tipton.
Here.
Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Mrs. Sealy. Mrs. Mullet.
Present.
Mr. Bettencourt.
Here.
Mr. Womack.
Here.
Mr. Panks.
Here.
Mr. Lamarck.
Here.
Mr. Alfred. Mrs. Bellisario.
Here.
Now, would you please stand, and Mr. Luke is going to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Heavenly Father, please guide us tonight in our decisions that affect our school system. Please keep Board Member Ray Alfred on demand, please. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance is of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you all here tonight, and I would ask, is there any special recognition of visitors by board members? Then we'll move on to... I'm sorry, Ms. Bellisario.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize my husband Gene Bellisario, one of our parish councilmen.
We're glad to have him here with us on this rainy evening. And I know Mr. Bellisario attends many meetings, so to come to a school board meeting, it's a special treat to have you here. We'll move on to special recognitions. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, Government Finance Officers Association of Louisiana, Ms. Gail Franson, Engagement Administrator for Engagement Risk and Monitoring, Louisiana Legislative Auditor.
Hi, everyone. I'm very proud to be here tonight to give out this award. I work for the Louisiana Legislative Auditor in the local government division, and as such, we review about 4,000 annual reports. So, we really can appreciate when they're well put together, such as the one you're going to begin receiving an award for. I'd like to call Gary Silva, CPA and Chief Accountant of St. Tammany Parish School Board. So, okay, we're going to give out the award for the... It's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and it's on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association. And Terry Fortenberry was telling me this is the 24th award, so that's something truly to be proud of, and we're going to give it out right now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Franson, for coming out this evening, and we are very proud to receive the award. Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, American School Board Officials International. Our remarks are from Laporte CPAs and Business Advisors, Mr. Brian Huvall, Director, Audit and Assurance Services, and Mr. Mickey Simon, Manager, Audit and Assurance Services. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Mickey Simon, and this is Brian Huvall with Laporte. Laporte appreciates the opportunity to serve as the auditor for St. Tammany Parish School Board for the past two fiscal years, most recently June 30, 2012. We are here to present the 2011 Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is awarded by the Association of School Business Officials, or ASBO. This award certifies that the school system has presented its comprehensive annual financial report to the ASBO panel for a critical review and evaluation, and that the report was judged to be in compliance with the principles and practices recognized by ASBO. Just a side note, only 21 Louisiana school boards earned this certificate for 2011 reporting. Receiving this award, as Ms. Gail mentioned, the 24th consecutive year is recognition that the St. Tammany Parish School Board has met the highest standards of excellence in school financial reporting. This can only be accomplished through many hours of hard work and dedication from Ms. Terry Fortenberry and Mr. Gary Silva and their entire staff. So it's our honor and privilege to present this award to Terry and Gary Silva and the entire Business Affairs Office of St. Tammany Parish School Board.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening, and Mr. Foles would like to introduce-
If I could, I also want to congratulate, you know, it starts with Cheryl and her leadership and Terry and her direction. And I know we have here tonight, Gary's here, Ron Randolph is here, and Shannon Jenkins. All three of you- All three of you stand up and be recognized as well for your effort. Thank you all very much. And I want to thank the presenters that are here. You know, last time, they were supposed to be here and the weather turned really nasty. And then when it started raining this afternoon, I was starting to wonder about the award. But we were certainly glad to get them here, and I appreciate them coming out tonight and presenting that to us as well. Thank you very much.
All right, now we have the introduction of our National Board Employees. Mr. Javi.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz, Mr. Foles, members of the board and staff. At this time, it is an honor for me to introduce our latest cohort of National Board Certified Employees. If these employees would please stand when I call their name, and I'm going to begin with the teachers. Brittany Byers. Brittany received her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Southeastern Louisiana University in 2007, where she was the Outstanding Elementary Teacher of the Year. She earned her master's degree from SLU in Gifted Education in 2010. This is Brittany's sixth year of teaching, having taught in Tangahoa prior to coming to St. Tammany. Came to the good parish. This is her second year teaching gifted students at Mandeville Elementary. Her area of national certification is Early Childhood Generalist. Thank you. Tiffany Houston. Tiffany attended the University of New Orleans, where she earned dual certification in elementary education and mild moderate, grades one through 12. While at UNO, she was the Outstanding Undergraduate of Special Education in 2000. She is currently in her 13th year of teaching. She taught in Jefferson Parish and has been in St. Tammany since 2001, where she taught at St. Tammany Junior High and is currently teaching 6th grade at Chafunkta Middle since 2005. Tiffany earned her national certification as a Generalist Middle Childhood. Richard Vance Lynch. Proud father. Vance earned his bachelor's degree from West Virginia University in 1999, graduating with majors in Biology, Psychology, and Liberal Arts, with a History Magnum cum laude and Psychology Department honors. He completed his master's at the University of Virginia in 2002 in Secondary Science Education. Vance has been teaching in St. Tammany his entire career and has taught Physical Science, Biology, and Algebra at Covenant High, where he is currently teaching Computer Tech classes. The past couple of years haven't been quite good, has been quite good to Vance, particularly in 2012, where he was named Le Cue Region 2 High School Teacher of the Year, the Region 2 High School Teacher of the Year, St. Tammany Parish High School Teacher of the Year, Covenant High Teacher of the Year, and the Chevron Saints Teacher of the Year. He was also a Deborah Rochelle Grant winner in 2011, 12th school year. Oh, and Vance has perfect attendance for five out of the past school years. His area of National Board Certification is Early Adolescent through Young Adulthood, Career and Technical Education. Heather Revere. Heather graduated from Our Lady of Holy Cross College with a Bachelor's of Science and is certified in Early Childhood Education. She is in her 11th year of teaching and is the mother of five beautiful daughters, all going to be teachers. Heather began her career in St. Charles Parish and is proudly teaching, as Mr. Brady well knows, as the best school in the whole wide world, Covenant Elementary. Heather's area of National Board Certification is Early Childhood Generalist. We also have one National Board Certified Counselor, and she was here for the reception. Ms. Hobgood, is she here? I don't know if she had to leave. I would like to go ahead and, and tell you about her honors here. Melinda earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education at Southeastern in Hammond, and later completed her master's in Counselor Education, also from Southeastern. In addition to these degrees, Melinda has certifications as a Licensed Professional Counselor, a National Certified Counselor, and a National Certified School Counselor. She is a member of the Louisiana Council Association and the American School Counseling Association. Melinda has been in St. Tammany for the past six years, serving students at both Madisonville Elementary and Madisonville Junior High, Clearwood, Bayou Woods Elementary, and has been at Lancaster Elementary for the last two years. She has two children, loves to volunteer and travel. Please give Melinda a nice round of applause, even though she's not here tonight. I would like for all of our National Board Certified Employees, if they would stand at this time, for another round of applause. We appreciate what you do. Thank you, Ms. Heinz.
Mr. Javi, can you tell me how many National Board Certified Teachers we have in our parish?
We have over 200 employees. I think about a little over 112, 115 teachers.
And would you say that's-
And the rest are counselors, and we have, what else, Sharon? Speech therapists and school psychologists. And social workers.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to ask the families of the newly initiated National Board Teachers to stand, because it's a rigorous process that they go through, and they need the support of their families. So if their family members would please stand. We thank you for being here with us this evening. All right, that moves us on to public comment. For five minutes, we have Mr. Jerry Denton, who signed up. Mr. Denton is a candidate for the First Circuit Court of Appeals Judge.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the honor and the privilege of having the opportunity to come and speak to you all this evening. I sincerely mean that. I know you hear that a lot from the folks that you allow to come and do this, but it is a real privilege for me. My wife is an educator, 22 years teaching. She teaches in the Livingston Parish School System, and I assure you, she enjoys her work very much, and we get to talk school quite a bit and education at my home, and I can tell you right now, she loves her job, and, and she certainly appreciates the hard work that her school board does, and I know that you all have a very difficult job on a daily basis. The First Circuit Court of Appeal takes up seven parishes in geographic areas from the Mississippi River to the Pearl River. It's the parishes of East and West Feliciano, St. Tammany, Washington, Livingston, Tangahoa, and St. Alina. Approximately 580,000 people, 366,000 voters in that district, so it's, it is a rather large district, and certainly traveling it over the last several months, it's a lot of geography to cover. So, my wife and I have, I have one son and one daughter. My son's college graduate, my daughter is a 10-year-old and is having a very difficult year. She's in her mother's class, and so it makes some interesting discussions at home in the evening. I am a 26-year practicing attorney from Denham Springs, and I'm running for the Court of Appeal because I think that I have a lot to contribute. I have a very diverse background. I, I feel like I can make a greater impact by having the opportunity to serve on the court. There's a lot of serious issues that'll be coming before the court in the next several years, including, which I imagine you all will have to deal with at some point in time, is security in the schools, gun ownership, educational issues, vouchers, and many things of that nature that will wind up coming before the court. And I think someone with a background and diverse as I am will be an asset to the court. Also, just another side note, my wife is currently working on her master's degree, and so we value education in our home tremendously. I happen to be one of three children and the only person in my family ever to graduate from college as far back as you can go in our history. I got two degrees and a college degree from a law school, all in a, basically, seven-year period. Wound up, I spent seven years working four to midnight as a homicide detective, and I went to school all day. I, I truly understand and value education. I was Assistant Attorney General. I served under Billy Gust, Richard Iew as Special Legal Counsel, and Attorney General Charles Foody. I traveled extensively across the state with Attorney General Iew and Foody. I was also Main Director of the White Collar and Public Corruption Section, where we prosecuted white collar criminals, and we had a very effective group that we worked with, close with the state police and other local law enforcement agencies. My work ethic is, is very strong, and I will bring that work ethic to the court if I have the opportunity to serve. 19 years ago, or thereabouts, I made a decision that I would also do everything in my power to help other folks achieve what I have been able to do. And my wife and I, we, we work and we help other folks who are less fortunate than we are. We are tremendously blessed. We set up a scholarship fund to help other less fortunate children attend school. One thing I will say, if I had the opportunity to serve, the election will be April 6th, early voting starts March 23rd, and given the opportunity to serve you all, I, I give you my word that I will not disappoint you. I will be a judge that you will be very proud of, and someone that you won't be ashamed to tell your friends that you voted for. And I, again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you this evening. I appreciate the job that you all do, and I thank you very much for having me as your guest here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Denton. We appreciate you coming by, and best of luck to you. All right, signing up for three minutes, we have Ms. Lee Barrios, and she's to speak on MFP Proposals.
Lee Barrios, retired teacher from St. Tammany. There's no way in three minutes that I can go through all the cockamamie new policy changes that our state superintendent has proposed and I'm sure will pass through, but I wanted to mention a few to give parents a heads up. First really has to do with test security policy. To further show his lack of respect for teachers, he has decided, he says that with test scores now being used in teacher evaluations, test security policies must be strengthened to protect the integrity of the test and the test scores. In other words, to prevent teachers from cheating. So therefore, one of his new policies is that students in grades six and above will not be tested by their teacher of record, except for students with accommodations. So in other words, he's going to remove students from the secure environment of their regular ed classroom with their teacher, which is known to be a strong influence under stressful testing conditions, and put them in with an unfamiliar teacher. Regarding the MFP, there are many changes that Mr. White wants to make, all in anticipation of finding a way to fund the vouchers, which were found to be unconstitutional when funded through the MFP. One of those, or several of those, are directed towards special education students, students with special needs and gifted and talented. And I hope that parents will look into this, because it, it really is a precursor to reducing services in those areas. He wants to revise the special ed weights to differentiate funding for exceptionalities, placement, and performance. So he wants to further categorize special ed students and, and fund them according to how much he believes it will cost to fund each of those students, instead of the standard 150% weight. He says that there are no financial incentives tied to achievement for students with disabilities, another hit at teachers, as though students don't, as though parents are not incentivized simply by the students in helping them. He says also that there is no funding, there are no funding mechanisms that incentivize the high rates of referral. Excuse me. He says that they, we are incentivized to make high rates of referral for special needs students, which is a ridiculous concept. If anything, we try our best to, to reduce those students with needs by providing them with the appropriate services. He says that the current structure of gifted and talented weight does not encourage placement of students in more rigorous courses. Obviously, he does not understand the need for gifted classes and their special needs, nor does it promote above-average performance by students enrolled in gifted classes. So in other words, he's going to reward or incentivize gifted students to make As and Bs, which of course they don't all make, because they're highly challenged, and he wants to move them from gifted to what he considers to be more rigorous classes, which are IP and IB classes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrios. Next, we have Mr. John Rabalé. Mr. Rabalé signed up for CBO and Labor Issues. Mr. Rabalé, I'll just let you know that when you're discussing labor issues, it's customary not to name names.
Absolutely. I have no intention of doing so, but thank you. I'm really here primarily as a taxpayer. Myself individually, I pay over $22,000 just to the schools. Me, one person. And I'm outraged by the way the administration has handled a disciplinary issue for which I'm actually counsel for this particular employee. I believe, in my professional opinion, I actually also represent another school board, another local school board who's subject to the same appellate jurisdiction as this school board. I believe from this one case that there's evidence that people's contractual rights and the collective bargaining agreement, their human rights, as well as their constitutional rights are being violated. I want to provide this information to you. I don't want my tax dollars wasted on litigation. I don't want that. I've offered to provide it to the board. Nobody wants to hear me, so that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. I'm going to leave my card. I have teachers, witnesses, evidence, people want to come forward and talk about it. Mr. Foles did eventually email me yesterday after I asked to speak to the board, and I have a meeting with him. But I am open to discussing with each one of you. I don't want teachers screamed at at just cause hearings. I don't want them to feel paralyzed that they can't speak and defend themselves. They need to know what the allegations are. This client still doesn't know what the complaint is against her. She still, to this day, has not been told who said it and exactly what was said. She's been given a generality. The collective bargain agreement specifically excludes discipline on anonymous complaints. Yet this woman today, after going through two just cause hearings, still doesn't know what it is. There's a Level 2 hearing that's being conducted. You look in the collective bargaining agreement and you let me know if you can find a Level 2 hearing. I tried to attend, emailed to say I'd like to attend this hearing, which is not in the collective bargaining agreement. I was met here in the darkroom by two administration employees in this boardroom and told, "We don't allow that, and the way they interpret the contract is different." But they're not lawyers, and we need to go to the board attorney, because lawyers aren't involved. With lawyers aren't involved, why do I'm being sent to the board attorney? That doesn't make any sense. Where this kind of activity and this presentation of the board versus the employee is going to lead to nothing but litigation, and I don't want my tax dollars spent on that. I am happy to pay my tax dollars. I'm not here to complain. I believe in the education. I was educated in the public system, but I do think that you, you, you women and men of this board need to know what is occurring, because I don't think you do. I have information, this is not, you know, hearsay. I have actual information that I can provide to you of people who want to be heard about the problem at this particular school. Don't want to mention any names, but I'll be glad to provide that to you. My whole purpose in coming here is I don't want to file suit against the, the school board. That is not my intent. I want to open up a dialogue and discuss these issues and hopefully resolve them. But so far today, I'm going to be on that litigation roster at the end of this meeting. Thank you. My cards are up here.
Thank you very much.
As Mr. Rabalé mentioned, though, we're going to be meeting... As Mr. Rabalé mentioned, we're going to be meeting tomorrow afternoon, and I will certainly be glad to update the board after that meeting to hear exactly what some of his concerns are.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foles. All right, that brings us to our agenda items. We have the approval for the minutes for the regular meeting held on January 10th, 2013. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bettencourt, a second by Ms. Sealy. Are there any questions from the board or comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. All right, appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to January 10th, 2013. I'm going to read them all and then ask for a motion. Teresa M. Perara, Abney Early Childhood Center, 20 years, 19 years in St. Tammany Parish. Patricia R. Bent, Honey Island Elementary, 18.43 years, 17.89 years in St. Tammany Parish. Krista B. Allen, Lake Shore High, 25.11 years, 18.78 years in St. Tammany Parish. Joy E. Kidstry, Pearl River High, 7- Joy E. Kidstry, Pearl River High, 17.69 years, 8.01 years in St. Tammany Parish.
Make a motion that we accept it?
We have a motion from Ms. Muller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board or comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Now we have appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to January 10th, 2013. Jerome Rutherford, Central Office, 20.27 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Deborah A. Edwards, St. Tammany Junior High, 28.49 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Deborah S. Evans, Six Ward Elementary, 14.73 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Womack, second by Ms. Sealy. Are there any questions from the board? Comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. All right. That brings us to item D, to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation school refunding bonds, Series 2013 of St. Tammany Parish wide, School District Number 12 of the Parish of St. Tammany, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Hines and board members, I've asked our counsel, Grant Sluter, to come and address the board on this issue, and also would be available any questions on any of these three as we move forward through the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Fols. Grant Sluter, Foley Udel Bond Counsel. This resolution provides for yet another refinancing. It's a completion of the refinancing of your Series 2005 issue. The net savings to taxpayers are $1,263,481. $1,263,481. That's net savings after all costs, and that's the actual savings to taxpayers over the remaining life of the issue. It's interesting, I, you know, we've been aggressively refinancing outstanding bonds. You all have been very active doing this. In less than the last 12 months, the refinancings that you've undertaken and completed have saved over $5 million to taxpayers. So very, very significant savings. One of the reasons you've been able to sell these bonds at such low interest rates, this particular refunding, you sold at 2.11%. The outstanding bonds had interest rates up to 4.125%. One of the major reasons you've been able to do this, one in the prior refinancings, is again, you had a reaffirmation from standard employers of your credit rating of AA. Again, the AA is the highest rating that any school board in Louisiana has obtained. There's very limited handful that have that AA rating. You've been able to continue to retain that, and that translates directly to lower interest rates on every bond issue you sell, and maximizes the savings to taxpayers on each of these refinancings. So the AA rating, extremely important. We have to go back and get a new rating on each individual bond issue, and you have kept the AA rating. And that's very, very significant, given the challenges, particularly to school boards. But you look at the actions by the rating agencies nationally, and they've had more downgrades than maintenance and upgrades. So again, that's something that's worked very well, and again, the S&amp;P report once again emphasizes that you have your fiscal house in order, you're maintaining your reserves, and you're doing what you need to do to keep your financial shop in good, good order. So adoption of this resolution will lock in the savings for this refinancing. And of course, we have another one coming down the pike that you've already preliminarily approved, so hopefully will add to that $5 million plus.
Hey, before we have discussion from board members, could I have someone make the motion?
Move.
All right. Moved by Mr. Durham, second by Mr. Harrell. All right, so do we have any questions from board members on this refinancing? No questions? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank you. Item E, consideration of and adoption of resolution levying millage rate for tax year 2013 for the debt service millage. The debt service mills will be reduced from 20.9 mills, our 2012 rate, to 17.9 mills for a three-mill reduction. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Again, counsel for us is Grant Sluter, and he will address this agenda.
Again, this is one of the benefits of all your refinancings and early payoff of your bonds, and this is a very significant reduction. You've been reducing your bond millage periodically over the years. I can recall when it was up around 26, 27 mills, thereabouts, and this is the largest decrease to date, three-mill reduction, which is very significant.
All right, do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Womack, second by Mr. Jeter. Any questions for Mr. Sluter from the board? Mr. Durham?
Grant, with this reduction, we're still very capable of repaying all of our debt as it stands to date, correct?
Absolutely. We've run very conservative schedules, as we do every year, and do recommend the three-mill reduction, and yes, you're in good shape.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, I didn't ask for public comment. Do we have any public comment? All right, let's vote again, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. All right, that brings us to item F, to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the St. Tammany Parish wide School District Number 12, Parish of St. Tammany, State of Louisiana, to authorize the incurring of debt and issuance of bonds, rededication of a special tax and levy of a special, levy of a special tax therein, making application to the State Bond Commission in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mr. Sluter is going to address the technical parts of this, and then I have a couple of PowerPoint slides that I'd like to share with the board and the audience as part of your consideration on this motion.
Thank you.
The resolution you have before you would call for an election to be held at the regularly scheduled time of May 4th, and that at that election, the resolution provides for three propositions to be submitted to the voters. The first is for the authorization of additional general obligation bonds for capital purposes. These are the same types of bonds that you've issued periodically over the years with no tax increase, your last issue being in '08 for $167 million. This proposition provides for not exceeding $135 million. It provides, as your prior election calls have provided, that the proceeds of the bond issue will be used for projects, facilities, technology, and security initiatives set forth in a capital improvement plan to be approved by this school board prior to the election. So again, it will commit the school board to expend the monies for those projects subsequently determined prior to the election and included in the capital improvement plan. At the end of this bond proposition, it provides that, and this is a new requirement under state law, there will be no estimated increase in the millage rate to be levied in the first year of issue above the 17.9 mills currently being levied to pay general obligation bonds of the district. So that's the three-mill reduced rate that you just adopted in the preceding resolution. The second proposition is a rededication of one of your existing millages. It's a 3.44 mills tax, and it expands the purposes for which the tax proceeds can be used to permit the payment of wages and benefits of employees of the system. This does not provide for any additional tax, does not affect the tax in any way. It's a pure rededication, expanding the purposes for which the school board can use the proceeds of this tax. The third proposition is for a three-mills, 10-year tax for the purpose of providing additional support to the public school system of the parish, including but not limited to payment of wages and benefits, including retirement of employees of the St. Tammany Parish School Board. Three mills, 10 years. And that's basically the text of the resolution, calling for the election for May 4th.
Let's see if we can get a motion to accept that before we see the slides. Mr. Durham?
I'll make the motion. When we accept your condition.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Durham. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Ms. Sealy. All right, discussion. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Hines and board members. I just want to share a couple of slides with you of some of the information that bringing forth to you of why we thought it was important to bring this election to you and our thinking behind it. First, before I do that, let me just share with the audience and others here, and I know everybody knows this already, but just some of the successes that we've shared and experienced the last couple of years. As you know, we received an A-letter grade to our rating. Our district performance score is 122.8, and with school systems with more than 20,000 students, and remember, we're almost at 39,000 students, we have been ranked number one in the state among district schools with that size of enrollment population. Of course, we're also very excited about our ACT scores at 21.9, which is number one in the state of Louisiana, and also above both the state and national average. And as many people will tell you in the curriculum and others that we talked to across the state, ACT scores are probably the number one indicator of college readiness, so we're certainly excited about that and excited about what the proven track record that we've done with this. Along the way, we've also had many challenges. As you know, that we have not received any MFP growth since 2008. Our health insurance deficit, as you can see there, is a large deficit. We'll say that over the last two years, two and a half years, this board, through your direction and the insurance committee, has made some tough decisions that have certainly helped us with our insurance, and I do believe that out of these three, this is the one that we do have some room with and we have some control over, and we'll be continuing to tweak and work with this board and our employees to make sure that this number continues to go down. So I do feel better about that number. The third one, of course, is our retirement contributions. As you can see, almost $24 million worth of increases mandated, mandated since 2010. The bill comes in, it's a dollar amount, we have to pay it. And so these are the, what I call the big three, as far as the challenges that we certainly have been dealing with every year. I think it's important to realize, too, that we have certainly taken many steps along the way to deal with some of this budget crisis that we've been working under. This shows, this slide's a little older, it's probably closer to 200 positions now across this parish in the last two and a half years, that through attrition have not been replaced, and that's from central office positions all the way to school support personnel. Every position that comes open in this school system goes to two or three people before it even gets to my office, and each one is discussed before we make a determination of whether that position is filled or not. And you can see because of that, we've saved close to eight, over $8 million now in the last couple of years. As you know as well, we did not take a salary step increase for our employees this year. We extended sick leave, has now been discontinued except for catastrophic illness or injury, and sabbaticals for professional growth were eliminated for some savings, as well as you can see there. And then day to day, every day, for the last two and a half years, we've continued to look at every line item of our budget, non-salary type line items in our budget, to make sure that where every dollar goes, the best bang is buck, for our buck, is being there. And we've done a really good job, I believe, of doing everything we can to protect the integrity of the instruction in the classroom. And that's another main reason that we're here today and making this proposal to you, to this board and to our public, is we now believe that we have gone pretty much as far as we can with that without having to make some drastic cuts along the way that down the road would impact instruction in the classroom. So basically, that's why we believe that this election is necessary. We're happy through working with Cheryl and Terry and real closely with Grant Sluter, that we are able to bring these propositions to the, to you and to the voting public, that is not an increase in the liability that would be put upon our taxpayers. And Grant kind of touched on this, but let me just go over them quickly a little bit. Three phases to it. The first phase deals with the, a continuation of the current 2008 bond issue that we're under. This would be a renewal of that, would not require any increase in our taxes. This package would be about $135 million. It would improve our school security, as we all know, that's one of the main topics that we're dealing with. Also will improve our technology. You know, we continue to get many, many different mandates from the state dealing with technology, whether it be for testing, whether it be for other things. And I can tell you, none of those new criteria are funded in any way. So we have to, you know, we have to meet the technology needs. I'm, you know, I'm very proud of what we do technology-wise in our system, but we're going to have to continue with that. We're going to refresh what we have, and we're going to build upon that. We'll also be bringing to you some school facility projects. Our goal is to have the list to you for the March Committee as a whole meeting. We would, just as we will in the past, we will list the projects, what we believe the cost will be, and what we will be able to accomplish on those. I will tell you already, my thinking somewhat is, we have some modular buildings that we have dealt with in the past, that we had made a commitment to the public to look at replacing those where we can. We have some infrastructure needs that need to be taken care of at some of our schools. And then the remaining monies, I think we would look towards doing some renovations and remodeling. My plan is tomorrow morning, have a conference call with all of our principals, and I will ask each of them to submit to me their top two facility needs in their school. I will ask them to be realistic in their needs. You know, there's a difference between needs and wants, so I'll remind them of a need versus a want. And through that, we'll pare it down, as we have done. I've been involved with these bond issues for quite a few years. We'll pare it down and bring back to this board these individual projects with the estimated dollar amount that goes with it. Cameron, of course, Bill Brady will be involved in helping us with that as well. Under the 2008 issue, as Grant mentioned, we were able to roll back three mills tonight with the action of this board, so we will certainly see that in the Phase Three as we move forward. Phase Two is the funds rededication and no additional cost to taxpayers. Basically allows us to take monies that in the past have been used for other things to be used where they're needed the most now, to put our monies where they're needed the most, to kind of rearrange, restructure, whatever terminology you want to use, so that the monies that are coming to our school system, even though they're shrinking, we can put them in areas where they're needed the most, and we feel comfortable that this will allow us to do that, and this actually brings no new tax cost to our taxpayers as well. And the third one is three new mills, and it's the three mills that came from the three that you just rolled back tonight. That would allow us, again, to meet the needs specifically of our school system, including the salaries and benefits, the retirement cost. And because you rolled back three mills tonight, we're able to put those three mills onto this and would not require any additional impact on our taxpayers. So just to review these three phases, and what we believe the impact it will have on our general fund, the 2008 renewal for a bond renewal, we believe because of the restructuring of money and using monies that in the past have come out of the general fund for these construction-type projects, would now come out of this money, would allow us to free up $2.8 million in our general fund. Rededication, the Phase Two project, rededication would allow us to free up about $2.1 million. And then new monies coming out of this, new three mills, would give us $5.1 million. So you can see the total impact on our general fund. Monies that would become available to us would be $10 million, and the total additional impact on our taxpayers would be zero, because as you can see, as described under the third one there, the three new mills minus the three mills that you reduced tonight equals zero mills increase, and that's how we're able to generate the $10 million by these three different ways without putting additional money on our taxpayers. You know, our motto in our school system is every child, every day. We certainly work hard to meet that challenge every day, but these things that you see tonight, these propositions, are necessary for the school system to continue to maintain what each and every one of us want for every child in our school system. It gives us the flexibility to do things. It gives us flexibility to put the money where it's needed the most. The programs we have, the things that we do in this school system that set us apart are what we can fund if this is passed. There are things that if the monies doesn't continue to come and we're able to do these things. things, then the things that set St. Tammany apart, that make us different, that make people want to move here for, are in jeopardy. You know, we're going to work as hard as we can. We look at that budget every day. But there gets to a point that you can only do so much with a budget before you have to generate new revenues and take the revenues you had and point them in a different direction. And that's what we're trying to do tonight. Our community, each of you know this, our community values public education. They support us every step of the way. And I really believe with this package that we put together tonight, if we get out and do our job and make sure everyone's, and we're committed to doing that, make sure everyone is aware and understands what we're asking for and the impact it's going to have on taxpayers, that we will continue to get the support that we've enjoyed for so many years in St. Tammany Parish Public School System, so that we can indeed meet our goal and our motto of "Every Child, Every Day." And I'm sure Grant and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, questions from board members? Let's start with you, Ms. Muller.
Well, I really just have a comment. I'm looking at this, these proposals, you know, during these hard economic times, I believe we are really trying to get the best bang for our buck in, in, you know, rededicating this money, and I'm, I think I'm very supportive of this. And thank you for all the hard work that y'all did to, to come up with this, you know, a solution to not really solve all of our problems, but really help us to continue to give our students the best opportunities here in St. Tammany Parish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Durham?
Mr. Fols, I think Ms. Muller kind of alluded to it in the fact that even if this shifting or restructuring of the millage passes, because we need the public to pass and authorize the shift of the three mills, doesn't really cover all of the expected budget shortfalls that we may incur this coming year. Is that correct?
It does, and you know, and we, I believe, we've been looking at these numbers every way we can for, for quite a few months, but we do believe that, you know, we certainly had opportunities or options to put new millages out there and increase the millages, and we just, as well as board members, as well as community members that we spoke to, as well as Grant, we just don't believe that that's the right thing to do right now at this time. You know, our goal was to not have any increase in the impact on our taxpayers. And so, you know, this $10 million that you see here is certainly not going to be the answer to everything, but it's going to get, get us a lot closer than we were before. We're going to continue to be creative in everything we're doing, continue to look at every position, every program, and I feel good that if this came through for us, it would certainly be a really strong step in the right direction.
And, and my point I'm trying to make is that all the cuts we've already made previously are still in place.
Yes, sir.
And then if there's any additional shortfalls in funding through the MFP from the state for next year's budget or anything else, only makes this burden greater, because this is exactly where we are, and we're still having to make more tough decisions even with this passage. But we're very hopeful and we're very, it's very much needed that we have this restructuring of the tax base in order that we can accommodate and meet the demands that are placed upon our system at this time. And I applaud you and your administration for all the work that y'all have done. I mean, this isn't a knee-jerk reaction to anything. We've been seeing this, I don't want to call it a train wreck, but it's been coming down the train track at us for a while, as far as funding and, and the lack thereof. And, I mean, it, it's critical. We're at a critical juncture. And like you said, many, many people have moved to St. Tammany Parish solely because of the quality of this public school system. And it is our intention to maintain that school system the way it has been in the past and will be in the future. But we also need the public's support, and that means financial, you know, help. And this is just one way, we're being, as a board, responsible in just shifting of funds, and we need their true support in this endeavor. But thank you.
You know, Mr. Durham, you're exactly right. I was going through some papers the other day, and I found the article, the, the day after I was appointed superintendent, and the whole article was talking about the financial crisis that we were looking for. So it seems like for the last two and a half years, on a daily basis, we've been dealing with financial crisis. But as I told our staff the other day, you know, the thing that motivates us all on this is I think we leave behind a real strong legacy if we can put this together to generate these funds in our parish, to maintain what we have as a school system through some very challenging times. I can tell you, I sit with other superintendents at these monthly meetings in Baton Rouge, and there are some really, really sad stories that you hear from fellow superintendents. And I'm not talking about at other ends of the state, I'm talking about in our region, in our area. So, you know, this is important to us to maintain that we have. Mr. Durham, you hit it right. I've been working on a letter that I was going to send to employees tomorrow. If this passes, in my, opening line in my letter is, "This is a crucial time for public education in St. Tammany Parish." So I think you're exactly right.
And, and there again, I, I think all of our teachers, all of our employees, all administrators need to be commended. We've made great strides in the last year or two in, in our scoring and everything else, even while we're being impacted negatively with our funding. And I mean, that's a great testament to everyone, our parents, our teachers, our community, our, all of our employees. And I think, you know, there's an old saying, I guess, when the tough, when the times get tough, the tough get going. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to keep it going, so.
And that's why I wanted to share that slide with you up there. That's amazing, when you see what the cuts and the positions and everything to still be able to, you know, that success is because of the people that work in the school system and the parents and the students that we're, that are under our direction.
And, and I want to say that the board has, has looked over many of our budget items over the last couple of years, along with Mr. Fols's team. And I mean, we have tried every way we can to be fiscally responsible with our taxpayers' dollars. And we've cut everything we think we can cut without impacting the classroom. And at this point in time, we're, this is it. We're down to the bottom of what we can do. And we, we hope that everybody supports us, and we, we need it because our children need it. Thank you.
Mr. Bettencourt?
Thank you, Mrs. Heintz. This might be more directed at Mr. Schluter, since it involves some legalese or potential legalese.
Definitely, Mr. Bettencourt has directed towards this.
Last year's legislative session, the state concocted something to where, in effect, they were stealing local money for their voucher program, whatever. I think that was challenged in the court. It was overturned, and I think it's under appeal. Can any of these propositions be structured so that it says, hey, the state, this is local, public money for public schoolchildren in St. Tammany Parish? Keep your hands off of it.
Well, the propositions do refer to the public school system, so. Now, what a court would do, that's, that's another matter. I think I'd probably defer on that type of question to your board counsel.
No, uh-uh. Sit. That ain't happening. Sit right there.
All right, Mr. Womack?
You're ready. You know, earlier today, early this afternoon, I was thinking about my role as a board member, and I could have potentially, you know, by the grace of God, ended up being a board member in any school system in the state by some means. But I felt so blessed to be part of a, of a school system that has had so much to offer young people in this parish. And what it takes to, to offer all that is the things like our teacher-pupil ratio, you know, the attention that we're able to give our young people. And it means so much to be able to continue to do that. And so the implication of these issues that have been brought up tonight are just exponential. I mean, they're huge. And we're all blessed to be part of a wonderful school system, to be board members to serve in this parish. I mean, a school system this large to tout the numbers that we have, that's no small feat. We have teachers that do a phenomenal job every day, administrators that do, and the people that support our teachers, like the St. Tammany Federation of School Teachers, Elsie Burkhalter and her group. Let's keep this thing going. Let's do what it, what it takes, because we have the most precious commodity that anybody could have, is elected officials, is part of our job, and that's young people. There are higher elected officers in this state, but they're not handling our children like we are. I mean, we've got that job. Help us continue it.
Do we have any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public?
Ms. Burkhalter wanted to speak.
Ms. Burkhalter?
I actually started getting ready for this by hiring a new staff person that I know you all, especially Peggy, who drove me crazy about it. Jim Perry, she calls and talks to me all the time about hiring Jim. And I think that having Jim on staff with the St. Tammany Federation of Teachers and School Employees is, is one plus for us passing this. And the knowledge that I don't have, he's demonstrated before this board for a long time that he is a plus for education. So we started planning ahead of time, Mr. Superintendent and board members, and by bringing Jim on board permanently, and hope he stays with us for a long, long time. And right now, I want to let you know that the St. Tammany Federation of Teachers is going to do 100% to make sure that we keep moving forward in bypassing this. And, you know, we, we've been lucky for a long, long time that we have this working relationship, and we want to continue it, where all of us work together. And when the family gets in trouble, we got to wrap our arms around everybody and stick together, and the family is in trouble. So we are here to offer our help and to let you know that we're going to be doing our part by getting every employee out there and every employee to work hard in the community to make sure that this school system continues to move forward. And the only way we can move forward is to do something different. And to do something like this, we can't. We, we cut as much as we could last year without touching the actual classroom, where the kids would not be affected. So I just wanted you to know that I was prepared, Peggy. I got somebody that Peggy drove me crazy every day about this, I want to let y'all know. She was 100% behind us hiring Jimmy before we even started good. And so, and I really appreciate her advice that she gave me along the way. So 100% behind this, going to give 100%, and we will be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhalter. You know, we are a growing business. I don't know if Mr. Fols touched on the fact that we have 715 new students in our school system this year. And, well, we just have to maintain the integrity of our education instructional excellence in the classrooms while keeping the public in mind and setting our millage rates. So that's what we're doing. We're restructuring, reorganizing, and trying to make good decisions for all involved. Any other comments? Let's take a vote, then. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained, so ordered.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number G, which is approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole for Business Affairs Administrative Meeting held on February 7, 2013. Mr. Durham?
The first recommendation that we have--
Mr. Durham, could you turn your mic on, please?
Thought I was talking loud enough. The first recommendation that we have is recommends the acceptance of the low bid submitted by C.M. Combs Construction LLC in the amount of $976,000 for the renovations to the pre-kindergarten wing at Fifth Ward Junior High School, STPSB Project Number 0812.4.
Do we hear a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harold, second by Mr. Luke. Any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered.
The second recommendation is recommends the acceptance of the low bid submitted by Morgan Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $319,000 for the re-roofing of the main building, kindergarten wing, and walkways at Fifth Ward Junior High School, STPSB Project Number 0812.5.
I have a motion by Mr. Harold, a second by Mr. Luke. Any questions from the board? Comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained, so ordered.
That concludes our report.
Mr. Harold, any hope you think of maybe Jimmy Graham could help us fund a couple of these projects? He bought the, he bought the football cleats for the football team, you know, he could help us with the--
That was very generous.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Item H, approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting for Human Resources and Education held on February 7, 2013. Mrs. Muller?
Thank you, Mrs. Heintz. The committee as a whole for Human Resource and Education did meet on February 7. And the recommendation, we, we recommend to accept the revisions to the local evaluation plan. And I move that we accept the recommendation from the committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeter. Any questions from the board? Comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered. Thank you very much. Ms. Muller? Brings us to item I, certification of board members Neil M. Henigan, Elizabeth B. Heintz, Michael J. Durham, Stephen J., Jack Luke III, Charles T. Harold, Rowan B. Tipton, Willie B. Jeter, Peggy H. Sealy, Robin P. Mullot, Ronald Ron Bettencourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, James Ronnie Pank Sr., John C. Lamarc, and Mary Kay Belisario, in completion of one hour of training for 2013 presented at the February 7, 2013, as mandated by Louisiana Revised Statute 1753. Remarks, Mr. Fols?
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. As superintendent of the school system, I certify that the above-named board members did indeed complete their training as represented on February 7, 2013.
Thank you very much. Item J is a resolution calling for a tenure hearing. Mr. Fols?
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Board members at your desk tonight, there's a resolution that we'd asked approval for, calling for a tenure hearing, the date being--
21st.
21st of February. I mean, March 21st.
All right. And that does not require a motion.
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, all right. We have a motion by Ms. Sealy, a second by Mr. Jeter. Any questions from the board? Comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained, so ordered. All right, I'm going to make a few announcements now. The artwork on display in the atrium this month was done by students of talented arts teacher Darlene Powell. The students are talented art students who attend Little Oak Middle School and Bonnie Cole Elementary School. The entertainment was presented by students from Lancaster Elementary School. They presented an original play written by their talented theater teacher Kristen Elliott. The play is based on the letters written by the first superintendent of St. Tammany Parish Schools, Joseph B. Lancaster, and the book written by his grandson Christian Garcia entitled "Now and Always: A Love Story," a Louisiana love story. The students did a fabulous job with that, and the book is really quite interesting if you have a chance to look at it. LSBA will hold its, host a 2013 Public Education Regional Summit on Tuesday, February 26, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Tangier Mahoa Parish School Board Office in a meet. The board will meet again on Thursday, March 7, 2013, for our Business Affairs Administrative and Human Resources and Education Committee meetings as a whole. School board member training in accordance with Act 705 will be provided at the Human Resources Education Committee as a whole meeting. Mr. Bettencourt brought to my attention that the North Shore legislators will have a public meeting on February the 28th. It's at 6:30 at the Louisiana Heart Hospital Cafeteria in LaCombe. If you have a desire to meet with our legislators, discuss with some, some of the information in the upcoming legislative session, that would be a good time to attend. We have an executive session requested pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statutes 4217A2 to discuss the pending litigation that's listed. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? So moved by Ms. Mullot, a second by Ms. Tipton. We're now in executive session. Thank you very much.